I'm going to call the budget work session to order. Ms. Booey, will you call? Oh, you call the roll. Not Ms. Booey.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
Josie Barnhart.
Here.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Judy Justice.
Here.
Tim Merrick.
Here.
David Perry. Pete Wilderbohr.
Present.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Delude.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion?
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Bradford.
I would like to add anywhere on there, a discussion of the board members stipend.
Any particular location?
Don't care.
Can you pick one?
I don't have a copy of these. Oh, I do.
It's right in front of you.
Maybe between four and five? If that works for whoever's presenting, four and six? Or five?
That would be Ms. Sutton. Is that another location?
Where does it work for you, Ms. Sutton?
Okay. All right. So, putting it in between four and five? One second now. Okay. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Now, do I hear a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero. If we could stand forth the pledge, Ms. Bradford, will you lead the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this is not my show, this is Ms. Sutton's show, so I'm going to pass it over to her.
All right. So first, I want to make sure everyone has a binder. Everyone should have a budget binder. And thank Ms. Ginny Rinn for putting these together for you. She did a wonderful job with it. First, I thought I'll just kind of go through the binder to just cover what's included. And then I'll actually start with the work session items, if that's okay. So, in the front of the binder, you have a calendar. And that has been revised based on the date change of this meeting. Then you have a tab that's called Budget Changes. You have an Allotments tab. And that allotment tab will go through that, but state allotment formulas, current year local allotment formulas, and a proposed change for next year. You have a Positions tab that has current year position information there for you to review. There is a Purchases tab that shows, and I will talk a little bit more about this in a few minutes, but it shows the different purchases that we've made as far as the budget for those purchases over this year. And then you have an Operational 24-25 Budget tab, and it has 10, 20, and 30 on it. So this is a budget report for this current year that shows for the operating budget what things are included in that budget. And 10 being state, 20 means local, and 30 means federal. And then you have a tab that says 24-25 budget, and it has 41, 50, and 81. And so those are the other funds that we have in our budget that we don't really consider part of the operating budget, because those are capital, child nutrition, and like grant-type things that we receive in that Fund 81. And then you have, behind that tab, you have a Chart of Accounts tab. So one of the things that we had talked about in some previous meetings is it would be helpful to have some definitions to kind of match back up with the budget codes. And we can spend a little bit of time individually, if you'd like, or at the end of the meeting, talking through how to match up those definitions to that budget report that's in the packet. And then acronyms was something else that came up in one of our meetings. I don't know if this is a complete list, but we did develop some things here for you, and we can certainly add to it as we go. If something comes up that's not here you wish was here, I'll be glad to add. Okay?
I just want to add that when Ashley and I were talking, Ms. Sutton really wanted to provide for the board a comprehensive understanding of the complete budget. Because we know that what we've been talking about really is transparency. So we wanted you guys to have basically all the information. I don't obviously expect you to have the working knowledge of every single thing in this book, and we're going to focus a lot on the first few pages of it. But we wanted to make sure that we had provided to you a full accounting of everything, so you know what you're looking at moving forward.
Right.
And very good point. My intent is not to get through this entire book today, but to give you resources that you can look at and go through on your own. And I look forward to questions that might come out of that review of those other documents. So now I'd like to go to the Budget Changes tab. If you'll go to the last page in that tab section. And it'll be a white page, and it's entitled Budget Summary, 24-25 Fiscal Year Budget.
Say it again?
Yep. So it's behind the Budget Changes tab, it's the very last page. It'll be a white page, and it's titled Budget Summary, 2024-2025 Fiscal Year Budget. Yes. And so I wanted to start with our current year budget. I know we've talked about that a lot in our budget listening sessions. But we have had some changes to the budget. This summary page includes the last budget amendment that was actually approved at our last board meeting. So I wanted to give you a revised sheet that shows that information. And so this will be familiar. You've seen this format before. But starting at the top, Current Year Revenue Sources, you can see, state makes up a majority of our revenue at 54 percent. Counties at 31.2 percent. And then federal makes up that 9.1 percent. And that question came up, how much of our funding of our total budget is federal? And so here you can see that's $34 million. And that does include child nutrition USDA funding that we receive. Yes?
Well, yesterday, it's hard to keep track of everything. But yesterday, a figure of 19 percent was given as far as federal funding, so it's actually 9 percent?
Yeah. So looking at our entire budget, it's 9 percent. And then, and you'll see, let's see, I don't have that in here. Yeah, looking at our entire budget is 9 percent. But I think the question asked in a recent meeting was how much, like a dollar amount without child nutrition is 22.2 million. Of that $34 million number, 12 million of that is related to the child nutrition USDA funding.
Would you address how this number fluctuates all the time in terms of the funding coming in and how it ebbs and flows? Because it's hard to have a concrete number on any one given day. And I've been trying to say, you know, check the website, check before you quote a number. And this is even a couple of pennies less than what I quoted two weeks ago. So can you explain why that fluctuates? It's not that you're doing something that varies.
Yeah, yeah. So if it's just like a few pennies or dollars, and that's probably a rounding, depending on how you run the report and how you're rounding at different levels. But what happens is, we start off with initial allotments. So when we're building our budget for next year, we're going to build the budget based on funding that we know we get every year, that we know to expect it, and it's going to come in. But what happens for us is during the year, we'll be eligible to apply for different grants. So there are, EC is a good example. Like DPI will open up where we can, if we have kids that meet this certain criteria or fall into this category, we can submit an application and receive additional funding for that pot of money. And so that happens a lot during the year. So that's why periodically during the year, I bring budget amendments. And I try to list, you know, it's an increase of a million dollars because of, you know, this grant, or we receive this additional funding beyond what we thought we would receive for teachers or whatever it might be. So we're constantly getting adjustments to our revenue throughout the year. We actually get adjustments almost monthly from DPI. And so we're, sometimes they're small, so I don't bring necessarily every one of those changes, and I just kind of accumulate those. And when I have a large amount, then I bring it to the board for the approval, so that we're not bringing things constantly.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Thank you.
And the statement is the one that moves the most often, because they do have reconciliation every month, correct?
Yes, that's true. And like the safety grants, like there's just a lot of examples of things in the original budget we don't know is going to be there, or we've applied for, and we don't know if we've gotten the money yet. So as it comes in, we budget those.
Is this a good time to tell us what comes in in advance and what comes in in arrears? Of federal, state, and local? Or is it all in arrears?
So our state funding is funding in arrears, meaning they look at our second month student average daily membership this year to tell, to determine what our state revenue is going to be next year. And that's our starting point. And so next year, when we get after the second month, if our numbers are higher, the state will give us more funding. If it's less, they'll just hold us harmless until the end of the year. But we'll know we'll have to adjust for that going into the following year. Federal is a little different. They're going to fund us normally based on different headcounts, the different population of students that we have. And so it does vary from year to year, depending on the students that we have. However, they normally give us a planning allotments, but they're so late in the year, we're normally done building our budget before we ever get federal planning allotments. So as of right now, I've got no allotments from state or federal. But we're building the budget, making lots of assumptions. And I'll go over those assumptions with you today. And then once we have the actual revenue numbers, then we'll have to come back and adjust to shore everything up.
I'm going to follow up on this round of questions, though. So the funding in the arrears, I'll, that's off the ATM. But what is, what are, what is the state doing as reconciliation? Because you said there's a monthly reconciliation, so we would potentially be getting small amount or large amount funds. What does that come from?
Yep. So every month, we get something that's called a revision report, an allotment revision report from DPI. And that makes adjustments based on if we've applied for and received a grant.
Okay, so grants.
Yep. Or it could be, we're using NCVPS. And so the state makes an adjustment and takes teacher positions from us to fund NCVPS slots. And then, so that's an adjustment you would see. When we have foreign exchange teachers, originally, we're giving them money in like a regular classroom teacher allotment. But once we identified who those foreign exchange teachers are going to be, we turn that into DPI. They take it out of one program number, put it in another program number. So it's, sometimes it's not even an adjustment to the bottom line, but it's adjustments between programs, so that we can make sure we're spending the money on eligible expenses for those particular programs.
Thank you.
A good case in point for our international teachers who serve.
Yep.
Participate program, they have to be in a different budget code.
Yes.
Because they don't receive pension. They don't receive retirement, so they get pulled out.
Right.
And there's a different cost associated.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Cool. Thank you.
So next, we have our expenditures. And we have this categorized by purpose. So as you can see, it's the same amount in total, 377.6 million. Instructional, as we would expect, makes up 69.5 percent. That's the largest percent of our total budget. With system-wide support making up 68.8 million at 18.2 percent. And I, because we've gotten questions in the past, I did put a little note out to the side trying to give a description of those different purposes, thinking that possibly that's helpful. And then next, in middle of the page, breaking out the operating expenses. So we can see, so the top talks about total budget, and then we're focusing in on our operational expense budget. So as you can see here, that's 316.8 million. 76.8 percent is related to instruction, with 20.4 percent system-wide supports. And that's the majority of our operating budget there. Reviewing that same budget, but looking at it in a different format, we have it broken down by object. So here you can see how much of that budget is salary and employer-provided benefits and purchase services. As you can see here, salaries make up 56.9 percent, employer benefits 26.2 percent. So when you look at those first three lines, that makes up 93 percent of our operating budget. And that's why I decided in your binder to actually break out a tab. So purchases, behind that tab, you'll see the detailed budget that makes up 9.8 percent of the current budget. And then when you look behind the operational tab, and if you look through those expenses and you look through the positions behind, I'm sorry, the Positions tab, you look through those positions, that makes up 90. So if you review those things, you've reviewed 93 percent of our operating budget.
And the fact that people make up 83 percent of our budget.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Operations has proposed, as opposed to travel, probably?
Yes. So when we look at our total budget versus operating, the difference is, total budget also includes capital, and it includes child nutrition. And then it also includes grants that we receive, not through DPI, but through other agencies. So like, for example, NC pre-K would be included in that. The county pre-K grants we receive are included in that. So because those have to be spent on those particular grants, is why we're separating those things from the operating.
For accounting purposes.
Right.
For accountability purposes.
Yep. It's, you have more flexibility with the operational budget, how you spend it. The capital, once the county says this is what we're funding, or the state says that's what we're, that's what we have to spend it on. Same thing with the grants. Once we apply and we get it, that's what we have to spend it on. Child nutrition, have to spend that money on child nutrition. So that's the reason we separate those. We really don't have flexibility. Operating is where we have our flexibility to make changes.
My question is for Dr. Martin. You just said 83-some-odd percent. Did you mean under operating expenditures total by object, the first two lines, salaries and the benefits?
Salaries and benefits.
Just want to make sure.
83 percent of the 300.
Just want to make sure everybody understood that that's, those two things have to be combined when we talk about people.
Right. Because that is, that is the difference. Right there is exactly the difference between when you talk about a salary a person takes home and what the district invests in our employees. Those are the reasons for those two different.
It's 82.86 million dollars that nobody ever sees, but somebody's got to pay for.
Right.
When's the last time we bid out our benefits? I know last year, we talked about we've seen a substantial increase over the last five years. And so I'm just curious what the process of that is. Because I don't want to take away benefits.
So that's a state. So the state does that. They handle all of that.
They do healthcare, but then we also offer, there's like a, on our website, there's a whole list of the benefits that we offer.
So that is not included here. So this number is just what we pay for our employees. And those extra benefits, like vision, dental, is not included in that number. Because then our employees are paying the premiums on those themselves. Does that make sense?
Those are, those are benefits that you can accept as an award.
Right.
Well, I guess, that's what I guess my question is. How often do we bid that out? Just to you.
We, we, we're happy with the group that we have. There is another group called Pierce Group Benefits I think. That have been looking around. We told them we needed a year before we would make a decision about, look, man, we may rebid that.
Okay. So it's, there's not like a time, it's just an ever?
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Well, we have a contract with the benefit group we have here. It has not run out.
And then at the bottom of the sheet, you can see the average daily membership. So this is the same little chart that we've shown before that shows the locations. I did want to add, while we were reviewing that chart, as we're going into next year, as we had just talked about using that funding in a real arrears model with the state, we are anticipating funding from the state for 24,599 students. And so of course, comparing that number to this 24,858 that you see here, that is the K-12 subtotal, we do have a decrease there of about 259, if I'm, I think that's 259 students.
Is that what's in this year's general?
Yes.
That's how they're funding?
Yep. That's exactly right. And once again, and I'm repeating a little bit, but if our student numbers actually come in higher than that 24,599, then the state will make that right. They'll, they'll give us the additional funding for however many more kids come. But if we're shorter than that, then they'll hold us harmless until the next year.
Which is a much easier way for us to manage.
It's easier to budget that way.
Because what they used to do is they would come and take money back.
Yes.
They just changed that.
Yes, that's right. This is the first year that they've used that model.
That's a great little chart there, Ms. Martin. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. And then if you don't mind, let's look behind the Allotments tab. So that's the next tab. We have here three, three different sheets of paper. They're all different colors to help us out. But the first sheet is State Allotments. So the state allotments are on the white sheets of paper. And as you can see, there's, we actually received three different categories of allotments from the state. And so the first page is our Dollar Allotments. And you can see there the different, and this is probably familiar to you. I know we've talked a lot about formulas this year. The second page is the sheet for Position Allotments. And this is where we've talked about before. The state pays for a certain number of positions, no matter the cost. They'll cover everything associated with that position. We really like, so when you go to Raleigh, we really like Position Allotments. If I haven't said that enough, we really like those.
You might, you might be happy to know, and my fellow board members, I just saw that, I think it was yesterday, two days ago, a representative from the House adopted a lot of the things from the letter that we had addressed. The minimum pay to be 50,000, a 5 percent step increase. And part of the bill was talking about reevaluating the allotment system, which I think, I think all of us around this table are happy to see. So crossover, you know, there's lots of stuff that happens on the state level, but there's crossover deadlines that hasn't happened yet. But I was pleased to at least see that bill come to fruition, and a lot of the things that we have had conversations about being brought up at the state level, too.
That's encouraging. Hopefully we'll see something for that.
It's not changed yet, but I'm, it's on my eyes to keep watching.
Page three shows the categorical allotments. And this is where we've talked about, you know, we've received funding for different types, different specific groups of students, based on the needs of those students. So that's on page three. And then the next.
These are in addition to?
So.
Allotments are in addition to, or that's it?
So what will happen is, we get allotments for all students. And then we'll get an additional allotment for children with disabilities, for our AIG students. So it, there's a base allotment, and then we'll get allotments on top for the special needs of different groups of children.
And that comes with state or federal?
This, this is actually, it, we get from the state, from federal as well, but we're specifically talking about state now. Yep. So on page three, it talks about the areas that we receive the additional funding from the state.
But often, that categorical allotment will top out at a certain percentage.
True.
As you see down there in academically gifted, they will give us 1492 per child, up to 4 percent of our population. Does anyone want to take a stab at how many of our students in New Hanover County are identified as AIG?
13 percent.
I was going to say 12. It's all getting closer.
21.3 percent.
Wow. That's good in a way, but sad.
Well, there's, there's, I want to say, a huge amount of difference between 4 percent and 21 percent. And these are the struggles that I think we wanted to bring to you folks, is that when it tops out at a certain percentage, when you're a high-performing district like we are, and you have incredibly effective teachers and intelligent children and families, that's a, that's a cost differential. That's about $300 per student instead of 14.
Thank you for bringing that up, Chris, because I had, that's very important, and I had forgotten to mention that.
We should be proud of that. And so academic commissioners should be aware of it.
Add it to.
Okay. Next, we have a couple of blue sheets of paper. So this is showing the allotment formulas that we're using in the current year. So these are our local allotment formulas. Remember, these are the allotments that we actually allocate everything by, which is more than the state. But we use our county funding for that difference. And so I wanted you to have that as a reference. If you flip on through, you'll see some green sheets of paper. So these are our proposed formulas as we're building the budget for this year. The only change, and Chris, you help me if I missed anything, but the only thing that we changed on these formulas compared to the current year is on page three. We're proposing to make a change from, it's at the, in the middle of the page where it says, "All Schools Non-Salary Formulas," we're proposing to make a change from $65 per student for instructional supplies to $60 per student. So currently, it's $65, and we're proposing a change to 60. And then the next line for pre-K instructional supplies, we're proposing to make a change from $30 per student to $120 per student.
That's a pretty big jump.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. From 65 to 60, and from 130 to 120. Sorry, I am sorry about that.
30 to 120, I'm like, whoa.
One of the reasons that we're looking at doing this adjustment, we're having some concerns of things like athletic equipment, the cost of athletic equipment increasing, and the need to make sure we have updated and valid equipment for kids to use.
So everything in this bottom box is regarding supplies?
And, thank you. One of the, one of the legislative agenda items that our board adopted was the support of pre-K. And in particular, one of the biggest discrepancies that we've seen is the difference of funding from the state level that private sites receive versus public sites. And so that is conversations that whenever we have them, we can address that openly. Rough, it's not quite half, but it's close to half. And so to have those conversations to help close that differential with exceptional benefits, it was a devastation to. it was a devastation to our community for us to lose the Head Start grant. Um, but that is an area of target as far as common language that when we have these conversations of, that's kind of what the target focus when we're talking about a pre-K, how we can maintain the high quality. We have a phenomenal program. We're seeing a lot of good growth with our younger students and the performance that they have in kindergarten going up. So, um, just so, just so we're aware when we're talking to our representatives of where that target focus is.
And do you mind explaining why we're going down five dollars and why we're going down ten dollars per student? Because, to be honest, a lot of the, kind of the media and social media criticism we get is teachers have to go and buy their own supplies. We hear a lot of that. And so here we are, taking away. What's the logic behind that?
Well, so just as Dr. Barnes had said, we, we have athletic equipment that, um, those schools haven't been able to make those purchases in several years, and Julie can probably talk better to this. And so trying to figure out a way to, for the safety aspect of it, having the equipment that's needed in those athletic programs. But I'll let you speak.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just reiterate that. It's mainly about the, um, safety equipment for athletic programs. And at this point, if we don't replace this pro, those, the equipment, then we're gonna need to reduce the number of students who are able to participate.
So you're shifting the funds into the athletic.
Right. Right.
So was there a change to the athletic formula or no? Because I see that's down at the bottom.
So.
If we're worried, or is that something?
So I have, I have not made a change here. We were, um, I can't remember if it would make, would it make a change to this formula? Or is it in a separate program? I can't remember.
So it was the additional request that should be included. So I added it as an, as a request. I don't know how it should calculate in the formula.
Let me go back and check.
I can work with you on that.
Yeah, I can't remember if it's an, a different pot of money or if it should be an adjustment to this formula. So let me go back and check that.
And I can't see the bottom, and I don't have a hand outside. I'm not sure what we're referring to.
It doesn't change the allotment. This allotment is also for things like paying for officials and things like that.
Right.
This would be a separate item that we would use specifically to repair equipment.
Gotcha.
And I was just gonna say, and it was a hundred and fifty years ago that I was athletic.
At least.
You have, at least, yeah. But you have no idea how much, like refurbishing a helmet, football helmet is. And you, I mean, you have to, have to have that, you know, but it's, you know, you have initial expenses paid enough, but then to have it refurbished, which you have to do every certain number of years, it's very, very expensive.
Ms. Justice?
Yeah, and to put that, every school has a different support system within the school that can help pay for that. Some schools don't, and you can see the difference. And, and that's painful for the kids because they can see the difference when they go and play sport and play sports.
And we were lucky this year that with Ashley's sort of unbelievable maneuvering in the budget, we were able to put some money back out. In October, I think is when we did it. You know, our intention would be if we get to this place again, that that'll be a choice that we'll make collectively together about what to do with that. And if we decide to put some of it back into supply money, we certainly can.
Ms. Bradford?
To continue that, um, how many schools do we have that don't have that extra support?
Geez, it, it, it's so wide and so varied. It's PTA support, it's booster support at high schools. It really just depends.
I don't know, is it a dozen? Is it two dozen? Is it three dozen?
Geez, I would hesitate. That would be something I'd have to ask principals to get an accurate number. I could, I could give you my own gut, but that's not gonna be expensive.
Well, if you did that, and then each one of us took a portion of that and tried to build some community support for that one entity, or those two entities or whatever, we could knock that out and, and raise community support for each, you know, for a group of those schools. You divide it by seven, it's not that hard. You see what I'm saying?
I do, I do. And I know that every principal, certainly every elementary principal is amazing at groundbreaking funding, you know, fall festivals, things like that. I remember that our fall festival, you would get this amount of money back in instructional money, you know. So there's, those things happen on a daily basis. But some schools can raise significantly more money during those events than others.
Dr. American?
I think that sports are essential. It's such an opportunity for leadership building and team building and a lot of stuff. But instructional materials likewise are essential. And it feels like we're just putting more onto the backs of our educators. So I know we all feel the same way. I know we don't want to reduce anything. And if I said, well, where else could you put it, pull it from, whatever it was, I wouldn't like it.
Right.
But I just want to highlight that we can't keep putting more on our educators. And that is, I, it has to be said, I think we all feel the same way, but.
But these sort of choices were to make sure we didn't have to cut staff. I know you don't like that either. I know.
Right.
I know, we don't either.
Ms. Brathert?
Um, thank you. I wanted to speak a little bit to Ms., to my colleague, to my last point. We're not allowed to crowdfund for needs of the district either. I think there's a policy against that too. So I want to be careful. I appreciate community support. I know we've had donors to pay off lunch debt and things like that. And so I'm all for anytime we can tie in community partners. But I, um, I'm hesitant to say, hey, let's put on somebody to take care of the responsibility of the school district.
I was thinking more like community response, maybe partnership.
And I, and I know that there's, the PTA and PTOs are separate within the school system. And I think a lot of schools have that, and some even have partnerships with one another. But the flexibility comes with how much is actually earned from every facility. Yeah, so I just, I just wanted to put that out there. Because I love the idea, and I, whenever I can plug people in, I do the same thing. But I just think we need to be careful about.
I don't even understand what crowdfunding is, so that wasn't something I was saying.
Okay.
But just for example, you know, the, the shoe giveaway, the one day good. I think there's plenty of entities out there that would love to do something if they just knew there was a need. And that was the direction I was going.
Well, we have a community liaison that would be probably the best bet to tie in our community partners too, to be responsive to the needs, I think.
Ms. Justice?
Yeah, and you know, obviously, we were elected to do this job. You start to bear off into all these other directions, and that's gonna take us away from what we need to be focusing on. Um, that would be all well and wonderful. But at this point, we've already put a ton of hours into it, and I have no problem with that. I ran it knowing what it meant. But I think this is our main priority, not adopting a school and putting a whole lot of energy into that. When that actually is a community out there that they need to be the ones that are taking on, because it's their school. You know? I mean, adopt all the schools you want, but don't, please don't, let's not put that in as part of what we do here as, as a responsibilities.
And I know that there are several churches that do sponsor the schools around them. And so I think that that's, that's super beneficial. And I, I could be wrong, but I think Ms. Bradford is just saying, hey, if, if we can just let people know that there's a need.
That's what.
I don't know, is, do you want us to be like, let's go and find all the, no. I think that just expressing that there's a need in these schools to have, like, what schools need more support.
Did you know that?
Yes, exactly.
Fourteen, forty percent of our schools, you know?
Or what specific schools are struggling or, or need that backing, like speaking with our people.
Also, the turnaround test course is also looking at that too. So maybe asking questions there around how they can, you know, find funds with some of these schools.
And this money, that instructional supply money, isn't always money that directly goes to a teacher either. It's also for things like paper. It's also for things like the school-wide things that happen. And principals can try to adjust some of those numbers internally so that the teacher doesn't feel a difference what they get.
Okay, so I don't, is now when we wanted to cover the board stipends?
Yeah. Oh, look, Ms. Justice just worked us right into it. Ms. Justice, you have some extra papers at your spot you weren't here. And that is from me. And, um, Jimmy has given us. Yeah, and you have a copy. You should have a copy from the, uh, the board budget. Everybody, I gave some of you yesterday. Did you bring it?
Do you have a spare copy?
Do I have a spare copy?
I do.
Do you have one? Thank you.
Judy, I gave you into which one?
Mine's at home.
Uh, it's under your notebook. No, okay.
I was following directions back and forth.
Ashley, do you have the other one, the one that you and I created and looked at? Or could you email it to me?
No, I don't.
No, the one I gave you last week.
Oh, I put it over here.
No, the other one. That's right. No, you're.
I don't know. How is it different?
It's not, it's not. It was something, I generated something different that I gave you yesterday.
Oh, I have that. Yeah, everybody has a copy of that. So this is how much money, well, actually, this is how much money that we have control of. He says that's not the right.
No.
Oh, you want this one?
Yeah.
I have that too. I gave everybody a copy of that too.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, I forgot to grab mine. Am I rushing out the door?
There it is. I wrote all over mine. Take a look. But that's what we have control over. And, um, back in there, pretty early in the movie, so, you know, the part where we get the stipend for travel and education, that fluctuates, because some people do more than others. It's been my observation, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but generally, of the seven of us, at least one or two don't use all their funds. And when that happens, that just goes back to the fund balance. So, um, it took me almost two years to get all that figured out, so I'm sharing you a secret song.
Not secret, we're, we're.
So again, this is not a pool. This is restricted. You don't use it?
It goes to the general fund. Yeah. So, um, and last year, we trimmed our budget because everybody, every department did, and we trimmed it. And I can't remember what we trimmed. I think we trimmed food and supplies. And so I was looking in there to see if there was anything that we could trim, but not really trim, but shift into increasing our stipend. And you have, and you guys don't have this, but you have four pages of a draft document that I did, which just gave you the history of how we get paid. There were a couple of media reports recently that said that we don't get paid at all. And, and then there was another one. I can't remember what it said, so. And we don't get paid. We get a stipend. We get a stipend. It is supposed to be based on the number of meetings that we have per month. If you look at the general statute, which is one fifteen C something or other. And Dr. Barnes has given us a copy of the top twelve schools, and you have that too, of what they do. But it's based on two meetings a month. And I did a little fun thing yesterday while I was daydreaming in another meeting here. I wasn't in the meeting, I was just observing. But in February, we have seven scheduled that the public has access to, you know, by live stream. That's not counting all the other meetings we had this month. January, five, December, three, November, three, October, five, September, four, August, five, July, five, June, five, May, seven, April, seven, March and February, uh, of last year's, six each, you know? And it goes on like that. And that's not counting all the time we spent in the hiring process or any of the other small things that we do. So I appreciated being given this report of what the other boards get. But, um, we do more than two meetings a month. So with that said, this, this copy, mine's in blue, and it says draft at the top of it. I gave you the history. And what's interesting about our stipend is that in two thousand and eight, when teachers were furloughed, the board chose to dock their stipend significantly, like eight percent and some change. It may, the exact number may be there. And then in two thousand and eighteen, ten years later, they'd had no increase from that docking, and they gave themselves back what they took away. And then there was a one and a half percent cost of living, I think that same year. And there's been nothing since then. So I gave you some statistics of what the teachers got their raises, state employees got their raises. And I talked about COLA, because if you're not in business, you may not really have a good grip of COLA. But there's two ways to look at a cost of living adjustment. There's the federal one and the self-security one. They're slightly different, but they, they generally are running pretty close to each other. I gave you that information. Again, I'm not asking you for a vote on anything today, but I do want to make you familiar with this. And there's the historical data of what the COLAs were from twenty eighteen to now. So my proposal was, we just give ourselves each one of those COLAs for the years that we've missed since the last one and a half percent that they went up. And that takes us to approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars that we'd have to find in the budget for ourselves.
That's for total offset?
All of us. All of us. And so that's why I said, look at our budget and see if there's anything we can trim there. And I have to admit that I had this in mind when we hired Aaron Bullier to look at finance, that if he could save us a gobs of money, that maybe we could just get a little bit increase in our stipend. We don't know yet what that dollar amount is, but, um, it's.
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand dollars. So board action this year brought us in five hundred thousand dollars because we, we said, yeah, we'll risk spending under ninety thousand dollars.
Right.
Uh, and we, we got back five hundred. So that's a four hundred and ten thousand dollar increase. I must be a smart business people. So this is my idea. Um, it has to be approved by the county commission. And you'll see a note in there somewhere that, three years ago, county commissioners voted themselves, as they raised taxes, an eighty-two percent increase in their pay. And they get, if y'all don't know, they get thirty-nine thousand and some change and forty-nine thousand dollars and some change for their pay. And the seven of us receive about a thousand dollars a month for the two meetings that we come to a month. So I just wanted to put it out there. It would take a board vote, it would take the county vote. And I'm hoping that we can look at this and come up with some ideas for how to find some money.
Ms. Brathert, and then.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford, for bringing this to attention. Um, just, just so that I'm processing accurately and making sure I'm on the same page as you, um, it looks like what you're proposing is potentially for us to look at going from the twelve thousand dollar, seven hundred and thirty-two that we receive to increase it four thousand each individual, which would bring it to a total of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two for the year for each of us. Um, and looking at these line items, I think, um, to do that most effectively would be a decrease looking at the reimbursement travel rates of some, and that would be able to recoup some of where that twenty-eight thousand goes. I, I think that this is fair to look through and consider as board members. Um, I, yeah, we don't, we do not receive any benefits more. I want to advocate for that, but I think it's something to reevaluate and look at as important because, um, we have, we're going to continue to advocate for our community. And I appreciate you looking at the details of this.
Thank you. And, and Ashley, can you talk about the things that on? Oh, sorry, Dr. Mary?
Thank you, Pam, for doing this. I think that what I would like to bring up is that it seems, and I'm sure the public would hear it this way, that if we want more money, we're taking away from our kids. And I don't think that's the right way to be viewing this. I think going to the county commissioners, and this is a separate item from our school budget. This is actually, you know, how to, you know, obviously, it all rolls into the school budget, but this is asking them for something different. This is not saying, oh, we need more athletic equipment, or we need more teachers' assistance. We don't want to take money away from our different programs in order for the board to get just compensation. Do you hear, do you hear the difference that I'm trying to create? Thank you.
Or Ms. Justice?
And, and I just, when. I just was gonna ask her to explain, go down the list and explain those items. For example, we spend forty thousand, five hundred and two dollars a year on memberships. And I just wondered if there's anything in there we could trim. Last year, we, we trimmed our food budget. But did we have, how, how are we doing on our food budget? Are we gonna come out having spent all of it? Or will there be money left in there that we could? If we trimmed a couple bucks from everything, it might work out. And then there's that four hundred and ten thousand dollars we lost to the district.
So, um, I think you're gonna maybe go over a little bit on food. I, I haven't honestly done a good analysis of that. And so I can certainly bring that back to the next work session. And I know I have something somewhere I didn't bring it with me that talks about the things and all those different categories, because we talked through that last year. Um, I, I, the part, the membership dues and fees, you guys have, you see, you've already spent all of that. And I think we went through those membership and fees last year and felt, um, that we needed all of those. But definitely, I think it's worth going through that again. I can bring the details for each of those lines, and we can go through that. I just don't have it with me, and I don't know it right off the top.
No, we got a couple of these scheduled. I just wanted to get it out there and, and have everyone thinking about it. Because if, if, if we do it, this would be a good year to do it.
Yeah, and realistically, I'm retired, you're semi-retired. You're about to be semi-retired. I'm saying.
I wish.
The point, and the point is, is that it's really hard for people, regular, younger people. people to run. I mean, I'm just being honest here. It takes time out of work, and they have to miss work, and they're not getting really compensated for it. And so, that really can make a person, when they decide to run for office, think twice because they have to pay their bill. Not that I don't, and believe me, I can use, I'm stretched thin, I got kids, I'm very unusual retiring. But that would also help, anything we can do to increase the public's participation and feeling like they could be on a board and be able to not have their family sacrificed to the point, regular people. You know, it shouldn't always be just people with extra means that can serve, because all of us. Well, you're so rich, right?
Yeah.
We all, you know, we all should have the opportunity. There's a lot of people that can't. And this isn't a lot, but maybe this would help, you know?
And I would point out, I don't know this for a fact, but I know that Mr. Perry has to work every Wednesday, and I think this is Wednesday, so the fact that this is the second Wednesday meeting he's missed, I'm thinking it's because he has to work. And I know for the last two years, my full-time work schedule and my darn close to full-time school board schedule were in conflict a lot, and I sacrificed and worked until midnight, one o'clock in the morning, in order to make it up, and he doesn't have that option. So, it would help, it would help. So, I want to leave it.
I was just going to say, too, we have another chart that, thank you again, Ms. Bradford, all together, but, you know, the chart that shows the, you know, the Big 12 and where we rank, and, you know, it's not like we're asking even to be anywhere near the top, you know, of the Big 12.
Good point.
You know, there's, there's only a few that are below us, but the vast majority are well above us, and then they get additional travel money and above, you know, this kind of thing. So, you know, I think, Dr. Mary makes a very good, my colleague way over on the table makes a very good point, that, you know, maybe we can just shift somebody, not, not ask for, you know, because obviously, none of us, I would say, I'm, I think we're all in agreement that we don't want to take money out of a classroom or anywhere like that, but if we can even take some of our own monies and reshift them, you know, and take a little bit from here, a little bit there, from our monies that, you know, that are already spent on us, we could, you know, probably do this and, you know, make it a good thing. So, I agree with you.
Oh, it's a good thing the ink's dry. One of the things that I think, and Ashley, you're going to have to help me understand the order of operations. This would be something that we would bring forward in the budget that the board approves, or is this something that can be directed separate from the budget itself?
So, I haven't actually done this before, but my understanding how it work is that the, our board would approve that as part of this budget process, and then when we make the submission to the county, that would be part of what I included in the budget submission that goes to the county.
Got it.
Does that make, that's how I think it would work. I want to make sure.
I haven't had to do this before.
See?
Right. I think some kind of reconciliation accounting is appropriate, because you guys are, I would say, far below. There's a couple of counties, there are three counties that are significantly below sort of the mean average. And even the money that Ms. Bradford's proposing doesn't even, I don't even think it shifts you guys in the order of operations. It brings you, I think it makes you shift one place in the Big 12. I think for me, if I'm going to be giving you the good guidance that is in policy, that I give you as a, as a superintendent, I would caution looking for something that was significantly different than what our teachers and staff make. However, it has been several years since you've seen one as well. I think the idea of, of Ash and I being able to build a budget that doesn't hit our bottom line, that, okay, you give a little bit in travel, you give a little bit in food, it's a zero-sum game for what affects our children. But, I would caution us to say, well, we found $500,000 from this audit study that we did.
Yes.
You know, that's sort of funny money. You also saved a bunch of money on a superintendent search. Well, that's not money we had, that's money you saved, right? So, those are, those may be two different things. I would encourage, right out of the gate, I would tell you that I, what I think should be built in automatically is a consistent raise to what staff get. I think you should receive the same yearly change.
The COLA.
Whatever, whatever the state awards to your staff.
That's in this proposal at the end, that's the second part of it.
That's the, what you guys receive, and quite frankly, what my contract says is that I don't get a raise if nobody else does. And I think that's fair, because that is unreasonable for me to expect that. I think for you guys, something similar would be, you know, and it's quite honestly easier for the finance department to go, everybody goes up 3%, everybody goes up 3%, and we're done. I think you should look, personally, my recommendation to you as a board, will be to find a way within your own budget to reconcile the base pay, and then let us build that normal.
In the future.
In the future account, because that way, I don't think a teacher would look fondly on a raise of that kind that they didn't receive.
It kind of did, but it's in the, it's in real revenue, right?
I think that's what she's using, this is, this is the figure she gave us. Well, she was, there was a general, this is a general.
Yeah, if you, if you read, it gets down to the dollar amount, Ms. Bradford.
Yeah, and I didn't see that one, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
I emailed it to you.
Okay, well, that explains why I didn't see it. My bad. The other thing I want to make you guys aware of just a little bit, that, oh, let's not, let's just say, we had some cultural work to do as a district.
Yes.
That involved all eight of us. It involved you being in schools, it involved you being in a lot of meetings. The amount of work that you're putting in, some of that is required, but some of that is based on your own internal desire to want this district to be better. You have to find that balance point as well for you guys as a board, that now that we have made a determining factor for the superintendent, knowing that the confidence is there for the eight of us, that we are doing the work that you trust us to do, I don't want you to feel like some of those things are things you have to do either. Because I do realize the amount of the stipend is a not, a livable wage, it's not supposed to be.
Yeah, I know, this, this is kind of the time, because we're all together, and this is our budget, not Ms. Sutton's budget for us, because it's the board budget. So, I would like for us to discuss a decrease of the travel reimbursement stipend and other areas that potentially Ms. Sutton could look at and bring back to us. I don't, I don't think it's going to be the full 28,000 looking at that, but I think we should, I think that's what we, how we should move forward with our next budget session, is to look at some of the travel expenses in particular. I would also look at the workshop expenses.
Mm-hmm, yep. And that would mean we'd need to know how many we've had, and how much we've spent, and what we've got scheduled. Because I know that the out-of-town workshops have really decreased since I've been on the board, and I'm in favor of that.
In my opinion, and untouchable is the scholarships.
Yes.
$140,000. I know there has been some discussion maybe about potential changes of how we can do that more effectively, but that, that should not be able to be touched in this discussion. And beyond that, I'm open to what my other colleagues say beyond that.
Can anybody tell us what computer software and supplies, what do we get for that?
I would just be guessing. I would need to look at the detail.
Someone explain the outlook.
It bought us outlook, woo-hoo! No, we want it back.
If Crystal was here, she would know. Your assembly would be part of that, because that's a software program, so the application we're using for the board agendas and stuff, that would be a software and supply, as well as probably the policy contract that you're doing as well for the policies. My thought would be those would fall underneath those.
I think the policy contract is that membership and dues, because that's what, the North Carolina School Board Association.
Correct. You pay extra to have that policy piece, to be able to have that access. There's the dues piece, but then there's additional funds that you pay in order to be able to have that website with all the policies showing, and then update upon this.
If you want to give us a number, we can go back through and come to us and try to hit that number for you.
Yes.
Well, I got a number.
Well, I'm an odd one.
Need a paper.
I'd have a number.
Here, sir.
Give me your.
I can take it out of that board member compensation line.
I got a couple.
I'm just kidding.
What? I didn't hear you.
He said he can take it out of the board member compensation. I do know that contracted services line, there's 5,000 there. You see, you guys haven't spent any of that this year.
Woo-hoo!
I think that was an additional attorney that we were paying for at some point.
At some point, we were doing board training outside the district as well.
Yeah. So, so that may have been something that you guys had set aside for things that we're not doing, but I, but I can take a look at that.
13. Workshop expenses. Here, Dr. Barnes, I might loan you this, and I'll have it at the bottom. That was my proposal.
So, I think that, so that Ms. Sutton can gather all the information, we should probably come back to this and have another discussion about this.
I'd feel better about that.
That way, that way we.
But I would love.
But I think it's good to have that, that start.
Ashley, I would love to hear again, and, and on, the, the membership dues and fees, supplies and materials, computer, well, it's only $400, that's because we don't get any sticky notes anymore, computer software and supplies. I'd like to know the breakout on that.
Yes, I, I have that, I just don't have it with me, so when we meet again, I'll bring all that.
And then. I know, you are, you are, you're.
My only question is, there's previous board members on here, that, is that going to change, that's going to change the monies as well? So, the, the three that left us.
It's got to finish up.
Where do, can you? Yes, so, in our board policy, it talks about the amount of budget that goes to each of the board members, and when you have someone that's going off the board, they only get, they get a prorated piece of that budget. And so, that was what was left of those prorated amounts that we gave those board members. And so, before I adjusted anything, I wanted to make sure all those expenses had come through, because I know there, there were some things that Dr. Barnes and I had talked about that hadn't actually been processed. And so, I wanted to make sure all that came through before we made the adjustment on the report.
Got you.
And remember, the money that doesn't get spent is some of the money that showed up in that million dollars that we pushed back out to schools.
True.
Like, for me, in the superintendent's budget, anything that's left is moving back in to support kids too. So, it doesn't disappear into the ether.
Right, right.
I'll take on the whiteness to do with that, but I do like the fact that it goes back to the.
For sure.
People don't see it the same way.
Well, and trust me, you guys aren't doing this for the money.
No.
We figured that out, thank you.
We're doing it for the pizza, sir.
That's going to come back in, aren't you?
All right, Ms. Sutton.
Okay, so, before we move to the next section of the binder that I wanted to cover, I wanted to just share some information. So, when we're developing the budget for next year, some things that I want to make sure you're aware of, that, some assumptions that I'm making as I'm building the budget. So, if we need to talk through that, or you have questions, I want to be able to answer those questions. So, the first thing is, when we're forecasting for salaries and benefits, what, what we need to estimate for those amounts as we build next year's budget. We're doing a 3% salary increase. We are going to show a retirement rate increase going from 24.04% to 25.4%. And then, sorry.
I was, I was appreciating that.
Oh, where, is this in our stuff, or should we be on the screen?
So, actually, if you go ahead and turn to, it won't be exactly in this order, but if you go to your budget changes tab, the first page, in middle of the page, it has mandatory increases, and it has some of this information that I'm calling out. So, it's the first page behind the budget changes tab.
Oh, it's right there.
You'll have to turn it sideways, it's landscape.
And it's really big, too.
It's really small.
Appreciate it.
I knew, I knew Ms. Bradford was going to say.
Can you hold that over here?
And I'm getting to bring my glasses, and I didn't, so, we're all in this together.
I brought a magnifier, just for you, Ashley.
So, so you'll have, so some of the informations here, if you, like I said, if you look in middle of the page under mandatory increases, we are estimating or forecasting out, based on the previous five years of data, that we'll have a state mandated raise of 3%, a retirement rate increase going from 24.4% retirement rate to a 25.4%. And then, a health insurance rate increase from $8,095 annually per employee to $8,500 per employee annually.
Where are you?
So, those are the assumptions that I'm making as we're starting to build the budget. And so, we'll go through line by line the dollar amounts associated with all those increases as we go through this document. But I wanted you to be aware of those. On this budget change sheet, I'm not including state revenue changes and the raises and benefit changes that we just talked about, because I'm going to assume that whatever the state mandates us to do, they're going to give us the revenue to match it. Does that make sense? So, I'm assuming if they're going to say, we have to implement a 3% raise, they're going to give us the revenue to fund that 3% raise.
But I am correct, that doesn't cover all our employees.
That's exactly right. But I wanted you to see, you're not going to see a state revenue increase and then for revenue, and then a state expense increase for employee benefits and salaries. And I wanted to explain why you're not seeing it on this sheet, because I'm assuming it's going to net the zero. Does that make sense, Ms. Bradford? Right, right.
So, separately from local funding opposed to state funding.
Right.
Two different baskets.
Right, that's right.
But we have to match whatever the state does.
Yeah.
That's right.
Those baskets have to match.
What my question is, and I know we do shifting, we put the most expensive employees that we have on the state dime, because they just fund this work.
Right.
What is, what is a 3% increase from the local dollar generate to?
We're going to go over that, if you'll hold just a second.
Okay, but I'm just asking, not without the increase asked, of what that looks like. I know we have some other ask though.
Okay.
But, just what would that 3% increase be?
Three, so it'll, if you look on the sheet, the, the 3% increase and the, and the benefit increases is right at $2,000,001. Not, so it's $1,993,388. You see, that kind of, it's kind of in the middle of the page there.
The second section?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And is that the local one you said?
And this is local.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And before we go to the sheet, so we've talked about state, and then I also want to talk about federal. When we're building our budget for those federal programs that we receive every year, so we build into that initial budget, what we've told our directors that manage those federal budgets is assume you're getting the same federal money that you received this year, and assume that you need to cover a 3% raise with that money, and these benefit changes with that money. So, that federal is going to have to absorb those increases within that federal budget, okay? If the director is made aware that revenues change and increase and decreases, then they'll build those program budgets based on what they know. But if they haven't received any information, there, those are their general guidelines to start off with the initial budget.
And that's a good point to make sure we're making that's clear for our public and our community as well, after our conversation yesterday evening. We are building this budget that you will receive on the same amount of federal funding that we currently are receiving.
That's right.
Because I'll be quite honest with you and transparent, I can't build it without it.
Right.
There is not a way that I could balance this budget without the federal funding included.
And we certainly don't want to guess what federal funding we'll receive and what we won't receive. And so, we felt like it was better just to move forward based on what we've been doing, and then we can adjust once we have different information.
Which is, from what I can reconcile, what everyone else is doing as well.
True.
I was on a conversation this morning with the, with the Big 12 superintendents again, and this is what we're all doing.
I would like to make a public statement. I think this is appalling, and our schools are being treated this way all across the country, here, except, exactly, because we're dealing with it. But this is not the way to run a system of any kind, government, local or national. I just want to say that. Our kids deserve better, all of you deserve better, and all the people out in those schools in our community deserve better.
Dr. Mary?
Yeah, no, I, I think that, Dr. Barnes, your strategy here is right on. I don't think, first of all, Ms. Sutton, yes, we can't guess. But if we did guess, and we guessed something lower, and we still didn't get that, it gets very muddy. This is what we should be, what to expect. And then, we don't get it, it makes it very clear when we go to the county and say, you gotta help us out here. Here's exactly what we lost.
Or to the state, or to, you know.
Whatever.
Yeah.
All those things. We're going to do insurance next, which is kind of fun, because we talked about insurance a little bit yesterday, and so, it's right there.
All right, so, so now, let's start at the top of that page one of that 2025-26 summary of budget changes. And so, just keep in mind. And so just keep in mind as we're going through, we're starting with our current year budget and you have all the documentations related to current year budget behind in the back of the binder. And then these are just the changes that we're going to make to that budget to build next year. And so I just want to make sure that we understand how we're doing that. So first off, we are requesting from the county an increase in our local appropriation of 3%. And that is to cover inflation in the 3% raise and for our local employees and the benefit increases for those local employees. And that amounts to about $3 million when you add those two, top two numbers together. We're also asking for them to increase the grants that we receive for the pre-K program. So we receive funding separately from that local appropriation for pre-K and we're asking for that same 3% for that program for those same increase in costs. We are also going to request that the county give us more flexibility as far as those classrooms go. Right now, when the MOU that we have related to those pre-K grants, we're only allowed to have those classrooms in certain areas in the county. And with the laws of Head Start, that's been a hardship for us because NC pre-K, we were using Head Start to fund, to provide services for four-year-olds and three-year-olds. NC pre-K will only let us provide services for four-year-olds. And so the only money that we have to provide services now for three-year-olds are, is the county funding and we did get two classrooms through the endowment. And so that's the only options we have. And so not having the flexibility, if we have a student participating in the program that's a four-year-old and they have a sibling that's a three-year-old, this year they ended up having to go to two different locations because I couldn't serve a three-year-old, for example, at Johnson where I had the brother or sister was. So we were just asking if the county would be willing to offer us some flexibility when we're in that type of situation. It would really help the families out to be able to have that option.
I don't know if there's been conversations, but I know Freeman wanted, we had moved some of the pre-K classes from Freeman just to have a more of a target for, because essentially if you have a pre-K at an elementary site, it's a unique program in addition to, just like our high schools have a, you know, IB program or something, it's like a unique opportunity. So to streamline the process so we could meet the needs of our students there, those pre-K students got moved with the downsize of pre-K students that we are serving. Are we looking at trying to consolidate? Are we trying to see if that is cost-effective, beneficial to do that now that we have some more space at our centers? Or is that something that we've looked into and it's not?
And that might be worth bringing the conversation back to another work session. But we have definitely looked at that. One of the challenges is while we, we could honestly save money by consolidating that way, the concern is the families, it may not be close to where the families are and they, and the parents, the families may not have the transportation. There might be other challenges associated with the distance from the center to their home. So we have debated that a little bit and Dr. Barnes, I don't know if you want to add anything to that conversation?
Well, and it sort of speaks to the challenge you spoke about earlier where private funded pre-K centers get a larger amount of funding per kid because the model is built on the fact that generally your pre-Ks are embedded inside your elementary schools. So right out of the gate, you're not paying for a principal, you're not paying for the building itself. We've chosen to have pre-K sites, but there's no way if we said, let's put all of our pre-K kids into elementary schools to consolidate that money, there's no way without what I'm calling a major redistricting to get enough space everywhere to do that because there're pockets everywhere around. The only challenge was also if you have a kid at Castle Hain and the only option is for them at Johnson, there's two problems with that. One is you want Castle Hain pre-K kids to go to kindergarten in Castle Hain. And so the more spread out we can be, the better. But it tends to be a logistical nightmare, especially with transportation.
Well, and then my follow-up question with that is, we use the state report card to identify the four-year-olds that we service. And so when we're asking for potentially flexibility in the classroom, so we have the opportunity to serve three-year-olds, are we still going to be utilizing that same criteria of those high-risk factors to service those three and four-year-olds? Or are we looking at different criteria for what students we're going to service?
I'm not aware of a change to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It's that the state funding formula is different for three-year-olds than it is for four-year-olds.
Gotcha.
And then again, don't forget, this is a very complex question because before we lost the Head Start grant, we had Head Start and NC pre-K and EC pre-K. And so it's a very, yeah, and the county pre-K. So it's a very convoluted process that I just, I'm trying to learn and understand as well.
Thank you.
I think the biggest thing for your concern or for something we need to bring to the table is that we used about a million dollars of our Title I funding as carryover money to help supplement our pre-K classrooms. And that carryover only happens for a year.
Mr. Anderson, did you want to add something about?
I just wanted to get back on that. Moving forward and looking at our long-range plan, bond plans and so forth, we are moving to an elementary model which accommodates pre-K so that that transition would happen over time. As new schools are built, if we build River Lights, if we turn out and replace Pond Valley and Williams, pre-K classes would be built into that elementary school model so that over time, you know, it's, it's an easier transition. As Dr. Barnes said, you know, to do it all at once, you know, it's really impossible.
You're right, because you'd also have to retrofit a lot of our older elementary schools that don't have the requirements of square footage and bathrooms that pre-K had required.
Exactly.
And there's also that certification of the facility has to happen for those pre-K classrooms as well to be able to get the NC pre-K funding.
This is, I'm sorry, Ms. Bradford, this is a huge deficit. I mean, if we look at this and so part of this number that we're seeing in the 99, 1.4 is coming from that site we're no longer receiving from the city of Wilmington, which I know helped to support our pre-K program. Now hearing about the Title I funding, losing another million, that, this is a huge cut and we've already lost, so I just, I just have to say that to our board members how when we're talking to our county commissioners and discussing things, there are, those are, that's $2.4 million to a program that we had to basically chop in half the amount of students that we serve. So just help us let that come to light and share with them of why this isn't being responsive just so we could continue the, is it 540 that we have? What's the number?
540.
Oh, yes!
You nailed it.
Yes! But to be able to continue to service high-quality, 2.4 is lost from that program. So I just want to, just need to highlight that.
Okay. Just to tag on to what Ms. Marner says, our county commissioner, one of their pillars is pre-K. Pre-K. And I don't think they understand what Ms. Marner just said.
2.4 is a huge hit.
It is. And there is that misconception out there in the marketplace that we did something, this board did something to make it go away and we didn't. So we really just have to explain that to them one-on-one, what happened, and you know, this isn't anything that we did, but we can't let the kids be punished for what happened, you know, in the years past or wherever we lost it. And hopefully we'll get it back, but there's a time weight on that.
And I don't want to say the site program all went to pre-K. The hundred thousand, the hun, the million dollars of carryover from Title I was to supplement pre-K. This is just sort of highlighting the 2.4 number is the deficit that we're walking into the school year with. Now, of course, Ashley and I have been talking about the Stop Arm campaign and what kind of revenue will that build in. We were unwilling to put that into the budget as a, as an income until we get a little further down that road.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Ms. Justice? Ms. Justice, did you have anything?
I think they explained. Okay. I was listening. I was clarifying.
Okay. So we'll keep going down the list. So that gives you the opportunity to ask questions as we go. The next increase that we see in revenue is an additional, right at $5 million request of the county commissioners. And this is to fund our budget priorities that we'll talk about a little bit further down on the sheet. We are in, we're actually going to, we received, I'm sorry, a FEMA check this year for that $466,000. We're holding that back and we're going to actually use that in our budget for next year. This is actually a FEMA reimbursement related to Florence.
Wow.
Yeah. So, and, and we still are waiting for, I was going to say, we're still waiting on another check. So I think that one's going to, I forget how much that one was, but, so we're waiting, I think, for one more check and hopefully we'll get that soon.
Checks are in the mail.
Checks in the mail.
Ms. Justice?
And I want to point out that we had a very healthy fund balance when that occurred and that's why we were able to pay whatever it was that was insured. Should have paid five years ago, four years ago. And this is a reason we need, another reason we need a healthy fund balance in case we can't tell who's going to have it.
Will you speak to the arrangement that we have with the county now about the emergency?
Yes.
I know about that.
Yep. So we, we are going to, if we have an emergency, according to our MOU with the county that we have in place now, we will have to pay for the first $500,000 and then they'll pay for the next $10 million. So we do have that MOU in place and we do have that $500,000 set aside in our fund balance. So we have it there if something were to happen. You know, we have that restricted. That's right.
Once that MOU was approved, I worked with county to do RFP for preposition contracts. So we have that in place as well.
Where's that?
So remediation contracts. So if there was a hurricane, there was water in the school, water extraction, cleanup, you know.
Debris removed.
Everything debris removed, everything except putting it back the way it was. Generators, dehumidifiers, air movers, all of those things are included in preposition contracts so that, you know, we can act immediately in the event of an emergency.
And is, Madam Chair? Am I correct that we don't now have to be out there vying with everybody else who wants to grab them right now because we've got the pre-done contract, they're obligated to us? So we're not, we're not scrambling to get contractors, we've got to wind up.
That's correct.
He's smart, isn't he?
All right. Next on the list, we have a DOT easement payment that we're hoping to receive. Now, the board has not actually agreed to this. We have, you guys have not voted on this, but we went ahead and included it in a possible revenue, hoping that we would at least receive this amount of money. So this, this would also be a one-time revenue. So we've got to keep that in mind. So the FEMA and this would be a one-time revenue that we're using to balance the budget. So next, go, next year, we've got to remember that. But the DOT is looking at purchasing 13.447 acres at Johnson pre-K, if you guys recall. Now, I don't know if Eddie or if you guys have any questions about that or Mr. Anderson wants to speak to that at all.
So when we brought this before the board, the board requested that we go back to DOT and ask them to build walls similar to what they have on interstates. They have not responded to that. I'll be honest with you, I don't think they will. But I think that if they respond, the response is going to be, you know, we're giving you the value of the land. If you want to use that money to build a wall, you can use that money to build a wall.
How long would it be before that wall is needed to stop a train?
To-
I mean, isn't, isn't that to build up a railway? Well, how about the noise? To stop the noise from a train?
I'm confused there, stopping. Now, I don't know what their timeline is, but it's 10 years plus. I mean, it's, it's, they're-
[inaudible]
Well, we did go back and, I mean, the, the value of the easement verified, it's, it's fair, it's a fair offer. We did go back to them and get more money for improvements, like the fence line was going to have to be relocated, some playground equipment would have to be relocated. And we did get more money for those things, but we're not going to get more money for the easement.
So the playground is that close to the train track?
Well, if you're familiar with Johnson, you're facing the building, the playground on the left, there's, there's some utility easements that run up through, through there. And this would be an additional easement that would, NC DOT rail division would, they're realigning rail to provide passenger rail or passenger train service back to Wilmington with the goal from Wilmington to Raleigh to Charlotte.
Well, that's hard to- So how far, what is the possible distance between the site equipment and the actual, what are the tracks more possible to-
Well, we, we're going to move that equipment. So depending on, I mean, it's-
Right there in the middle.
Probably, I'd say 100 to 150 yards away from the fence separating the train tracks and the playground.
Maybe less than the railways.
All right. So that, so that line item is pending board action, but we went ahead and included that in the budget. So if we decide we don't want to accept that money, then we'll need to circle back.
When you say pending board action, do we need to, does, do we need to put it on the agenda?
So I think something has to come to the board for approval for us to submit.
Right. I've reached out and they have a company doing their land acquisition at this particular time. I've reached out to them. They had never, they had not heard back from DOT, they're going to DOT. I plan, I was planning to put that back on the agenda for April.
Okay. We drive.
The next line we have is, and budget for Medicaid reimbursement of $500,000. So we haven't been budgeting Medicaid reimbursement because we were so far behind on getting reimbursement from Medicaid. We were at least three years, if not more than that, behind. And so we just decided until the money came in, we were not going to budget that. So I believe that last spring, we got in almost three years worth, right, back to back to back. And that's some of the funding we've used to help balance out EC. But Julie, please speak to that.
And this year, the additional funding that we were able to bring in this year. So now we will probably be closer to, on track to receiving reimbursement, at least somewhere around the year from when we submitted the billing. And keep in mind, our billing rate for Medicaid reimbursement as a school district is significantly lower than the rate that a private medical provider would have. So this is billing for, for related services such as speech, physical therapy, occupational therapy. And then we have just started in the last year or so billing for part of evaluations. That is a new opportunity for us. But many other areas are not worth billing because of the, the rate would be so much less that we would get than the amount of staff time that we would have to put into it.
So now, and there was a change at some point, how this got so far behind, the reimbursements were somehow flowing through DPI and then going to the group that got, gave actually out the reimbursement. So now I think they, if I remember correctly, they cut out the DPI, so it's not going through DPI anymore. So now we're anticipating to get annual revenue from this that we can hopefully depend on. And so we feel like that's a good estimate of what we should receive next year.
But to be aware, we are, we are budgeting on, the check's going to be in the mail.
Yes, we are. We are. So if something happens in middle of the year and this ends up being low, then we'll have to come back and have conversations at that time. Next, we are budgeting indirect cost revenue. So this is, and we haven't also, this is another area where we didn't budget this year because we weren't sure what we would be able to collect related to charging indirect costs. This is where we charge to administer the federal grants. So we're allowed to charge a certain percent for administration and overhead of any federal grants that we have. And so this is a revenue, a way we can generate some revenue from having those federal grants. So that we feel is a good estimate going into next year of what we will collect. And then we also have noticed interest revenue. As you know, I think Ms. Bradford brought this up last year, interest rates were, are up. And so we're able to budget a little bit more interest revenue going into next year. We feel comfortable- We feel comfortable with that. So, we feel like that's a good estimate. We held back this year because we weren't quite sure, but we feel comfortable with that number going forward. And then, we've already talked about the Safe Light, with that going away, a reduction to the revenue of 1.4 million. And so, that brings us in total, the increases and decreases in revenue, 9.9 million or right at $10 million.
That is contingent on the county approving our initial ask of 8 million.
Right, that's correct.
Which is the top three lines?
Yes, that's correct.
Ms. Braffer? Before we leave that, just remind me, okay, we're losing the 1.4 million for the red light. And did we have a number, any kind of a number on the stop arms that we talked about? Do we have a guesstimate of what kind of revenue?
We, I don't have anything at this, at this point in time, which is why we didn't try to estimate because we also anticipate there'll be expense to go along with that. And we're not sure, you know, what that expense of contracting with a vendor to help us out with monitoring the cameras and not sure exactly how that works.
That wouldn't be this year anyway, would it? Okay, thanks.
Do we have a number, I don't see one in here, and it may be, I'm sure it's somewhere in here, but for fines and forfeitures, you know, I know it ebbs and flows, but do we have like an estimate throughout, you know, last thing, five years or something that we could put in?
Yep, so, this is, these are only changes. So, we're gonna budget the same amount of fines and forfeitures that we have budgeted this year, less the red light of the 1.4. So, I wish, I should know that number off the top of my head, but I don't know that revenue number. I want to say it's around $900,000 taken out the red light. But that's already been incorporated into the budget, so we're not changing that piece, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Ms. Braffer?
I think what y'all just said casually needs to be reiterated. The top three lines with the county appropriations, that makes up the 8 million. Could you repeat that, Dr. Barnes, slowly, for us to learn slowly?
We have begun initial conversations together as a board and with our, the leadership at the county level, that they can expect to see what, what my, what our budget will, or the superintendent's budget that comes to the board, will see an increase of an 8 million dollar ask of the local allotment. And again, that's pending the same thing coming from the state and coming from the federal government.
Those top three lines right there.
And that 8 million dollars is covered basically in 5 million dollars of what you'll see in the next couple pages as superintendent budget priorities that I gained through listening and doing the listening tours, and the 3 million dollars of what I'm calling the cost of doing business. That that 3 million dollars that you see there is just to keep us at the exact same space as we are now. It doesn't add a staff member, it doesn't pay anybody more, it's just the increase of the cost of keeping our employees here.
Yeah.
Well, it, it, sorry, sorry.
The raise and benefits, yes, in there.
I didn't, I didn't, yeah, it keeps us with the same number of employees, I should say, that we have now. And with the same services and supports we have now. And I did explain to the county manager, Mr. Kudry, that they would expect to see, as many years as I'm in this seat, that you will see this coming in our budget every year because the cost is increasing so significantly on our, on our folks. And that we can't, we can't even get our head above water if that increase of 3 million happens every year. Is that, how do you say it again? Subsistence? You got it.
Not the sinking of the high school, that's a slightly, that's a similar one.
But some of the more detailed explanations of some of those top three items will come in the next couple of pages.
All right, so we've talked about under mandatory increases, we've talked about that in first section, local raises and benefits, so I'm gonna skip over that. We're also anticipating increases related to insurance. And there's, there's some pretty significant increases for insurance we're anticipating next year. The general liability and property increases that you see here, I've actually reached out to, we, our property insurance actually through DOT, no, not, um, DOI. DOI, I don't know who I would do it. Okay, DOI, and so, that's handled by the state because we're so, we're on the coast, so they're really the only people that will insure us. And so, we, I tried to negotiate a little bit and they said, really, there's no negotiating here. You guys had FEMA, I mean, you had Florence and you've had all these, so much property damage, like, it's like, close to, if not over, 100% of, the claims are almost 100% if not over what we've paid in. And so, they said, there's just no way, they cannot do this increase. And they said it wasn't just us, it's this, our, this whole area in North Carolina, they're all, yeah, everyone's rates are going up. And so, I, I don't think, well, I know we don't have an option there to be able to do that.
It's 2 million dollars.
I'm looking at the, the per incident deductible from 2,500 to 50,000.
Yes, so, this increase is even taking into account that we are moving that deductible up to that higher amount, substantial increase, and it's still going up that much. It would've been a lot more if I haven't made that adjustment. And honestly, they even got rid of the 2,500 dollar deductible, that's not even an option anymore for anyone.
And I'm sure you've talked around with it, I have to ask the question, can we shop around and see?
Well, so, this is through the state, they're the only people that will cover us.
So, our shopping around landed us here.
It amounted to me calling DOI saying, please, can you give me a cheaper rate? And you're like, no, we cannot, because this is, yeah, the risk here.
So, isn't this like counterproductive? If the state gives us money, then we have to spend it all on state insurance? I mean, there's a disconnect.
Notice how that works, did you? Yeah. But I think for us too, this is good, responsible budgeting because what you could've done in the past is said, well, I'll just, we'll keep it at the same, if it goes up, we'll just pull it out of fund balance. This budget that you're seeing, we still are not touching our fund balance. And that's why it's so, so tight. You know, so we're factoring in things like we know we have to plan for.
Right. And I will say, on those insurance lines, if you read my notes off to the right, you do see different dollar amounts that are higher than what I have budgeted. Because those dollar amounts were estimates that were provided from the vendors, I used historical information to actually budget here. So, it is possible that the amounts come in a little bit higher once we actually get the premium paperwork, but I budgeted based on historical information because they couldn't give me an actual number when I was having those conversations. They were just giving me estimates as well.
Well, I have a question of clarity there. So, in the top section, FEMA, the NC DOT easement, I know those are one-time. Medicaid, the indirect cost and the interest revenue, where are those going in op, like, I see the top two from the county, local prestations, increased inflation, and I know from looking at the papers, the detailed ask of what it tells that 5 million, but what are we gonna be using those one, two, three, four, five things for?
So, I didn't, and we could, I didn't actually match up, this revenue line goes with these things, other than those top three. I just kind of pulled all the revenue together and said, I'm gonna take all this revenue and I'm gonna fund these other things, these increased costs and expenses. So, we could do that, but I didn't do.
Is the thought like a one-time expense of something, or is the thought building it in, in budgeted positions and allotments? For giving out now?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Is the thought of a one-time expense thing that we have in the district, or is the thought for those a budgeted allotment of positions, for those items, that one-time revenue?
Yeah, so this one-time revenue is going to fund things that you're gonna see further down the list. So, I, and it doesn't mean, so let's, let's say we get to next year and we don't, we're not able to identify revenue that amounts to this one-time, right? Then we would have to make a decision. You could not have one of these things we have funded on this sheet, or you could not fund something different. It doesn't necessarily have to be on the sheet, that would be up to the board, how you want to handle that.
And some of the details coming in, pages two and three.
Right. Okay, and then, the next section, we've got pretty significant increases related to utilities that we really needed to account for as well. Some of these increases, we actually saw this year. So, we wanted to make sure we built any increases we saw this year, along with anticipated increases for next year into the budget. So, that, those are the line items that you're seeing there. And then, next, you see a charter school payment. So, because we've gotten an increased funding from the county, you know, charter schools are gonna get their piece of that increase. And so, that's the estimated calculation, based on the current number of charter school students that they would need to receive related to that increase.
What's the dollar figure, sorry, Ms. Braffer? What's the dollar figure that we give to charter schools now?
So, actually, it's a little over seven. If you want to, we can look at that exactly. If you look behind your operations tab, and it is gonna be page 49. Now, give us practice using our report here, too. So...
Last page?
Thank you.
Yep, so it's actually almost the last line, it's the last page behind that tab in the, just about that last line.
Two other governments.
And you'll see charter schools in that second column. And when you look over to the right, you see that local number, the 7.2 million. So, looking at next year with this increase of 227,000, that would bring that charter school payment up to 7.5, 7.5 million.
But we sure at sharp charter payments from, if they come back, then we monthly are counting.
Yes, so we, yes, so we review, the charter schools actually send us their enrollment information every month, and actually, Ms. Jenny Rinn actually helps out with this. She receives that information and then she, she looks at the revenue from the county and fines and forfeitures we received that month. And then, based on our enrollment, their enrollment, and those two revenue sources, that's how we determine how much the charter schools receive. So, if their enrollment goes up, or if we receive more fines and forfeitures than we have budgeted, then their payment may go up. And we adjust every month based on that.
So, Ms. Braffer? May I ask, do we have charter schools coming back to our schools? Are we in, are we going in that direction or going in elsewhere?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're, we're seeing slight increases. This year, not as much of an increase as last year. And their enrollment kind of works like ours, at the beginning of the year is increasing, and then, as the year goes long, it starts declining a little bit, but not significantly. So, we've got 2,031 charter school students right now that we're providing payments for. And we're planning to use that same number when we're building budget for next year, 2,031 students.
And this is why it's so important to engage the media in the right way, to talk about the good stuff that we're doing as a district, because that ties to funding. So, when you hear me talk about the amazing educators in this district, that is, we're beating every measure you use, we are the best game in town. And how do we continue to make sure that that's the message?
Yep, that was a good question. And then, the next line is EC contracted services. We, we just talked about Medicaid, we received a lot of Medicaid funding at the end of last year and this year. And we've used that funding to provide some additional contracted services to our EC children. But knowing that we're not gonna have that extra revenue next year, we really felt like we have to build something into the budget to make sure we're providing those services. And Julie, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit more about those contracted services?
Yeah, the contracted services that we have attached to this line item are specifically for costs above and beyond the typical classroom cost, even for special education. So, above and beyond the smaller class size with a special education teacher, additional paraprofessional, or two, or three in that classroom, it's addition, in addition to the curriculum materials, any of the instructional supplies, any adaptive equipment. This is specifically for covering those higher-cost, very unique and very specialized areas for our students with visual impairment, hearing impairment, orientation, mobility, specifically audiology, behavior technicians, and then, in addition, nursing. Just to give you guys a little bit of an idea, and I included this in your legislative talking points, we have 15 students in our school district that require one-to-one RNs to be successful, be safe and successful in school, for school to be accessible for them. We have four more students that require CNAs. And then, the list goes on, educational interpreters, educational interpreter contracts. Whenever we have vacancies that we cannot fill, we will then utilize contracted staff because we can't just say, well, this is a position we wish we had. We have a student, a student who requires that position in order to access their school. So, we have to look at contracted services and they are significantly higher in cost. We're always combing applicant bases, though. And then, we do have a handful of students that require significantly more behavior support than we can generally provide within a school setting, even a specialized setting. And we have consistently contracted with the Center for Pediatric Behavior Health, which we are thankful to have in our, in our community. But that is another really significant cost. So, those dollars go toward those very unique and specified needs of our most vulnerable students.
And I would tell you that a weighted student funding formula would be that amount of money. That's a weighted student funding formula where the, the state currently gives us funding up to a certain percentage equal per kid. If they weighted it by the needs of the student, you would see that amount of money balancing itself out.
This is all outsourced, correct? This is partly in-house and partly half back to services? This is 1.7?
We have, what I read to you on the extreme high cost, some of that is in-house, but we do not hire our own RNs. We need to hire our RNs from an agency that supervises our RNs, and same with our CNAs. We will often hire our language facilitators and educational interpreters for our students with hearing impairment, or who are hard of hearing. We will contract for those when we can't fill those positions. Generally, for all of our related services, speech, language, physical therapy, occupational therapy, we exhaust our opportunities to hire qualified candidates on our team before we look at contracts, and we use contracts to fill those gaps. Yes, thank you. And I included, like, to jump on to what Dr. Barnes said, all of this is included in his legislative talking points in favor of that weighted funding formula for special education.
And then, hopefully, that weighted funding formula, the base will stay what it is now, and then, it would go up based on the different needs of the children. So, hopefully, they're not gonna decrease that base amount and then, Dr. Merrick? Feel free to talk about that, too, while you're rolling.
Can I go back one second, one line back to the charter schools again?
Yes, mhm.
And do the charter schools, the same as private schools, that if they start at the charter school and, and have what, 24 days or however many days that they have to be enrolled there, and they decide that they're not a good fit and they send them back to us, and the money stays at the charter school for the year?
Yes.
Is there, I mean, we all know how, how much inequity there is in that. Is there anything that we can do to make sure that these children are vetted more so that they, sorry, you said they're gonna take and you gotta keep them.
Yeah, if they come after that second month, the DPI's not gonna do that adjustment. So, I, I don't know what to do, I don't know what the answer would be to that. Ms. Justice?
Our legislators need to change it. That's all there is. They need to change a lot of things for our schools.
Is that on the legislative list?
Well, I bet it's not.
I was like, not the, the one that the board has approved recently, no, but I mean, I'll put on my little sticky note to address it at our next meeting to talk about, I mean...
Because, I mean, the state is, I'm sure, treating charter schools just like us. If they get their enrollment numbers, you know, by that second month, then they're, they're gonna be able to keep, right, at the same level that they were projected. Comes in lower, yeah, comes in higher than they'll get more money, but, yeah, but we don't want them to change that for us. We like that funding in arrears for us, so I don't know if they'd be willing to change it for charter schools and not change it for us. Mr. Wildebore?
I am correct that you said that the money stays, the money doesn't, some of the money stays, the stuff in the state stays, but the county money.
Right, that's true, that's true, sorry. Yes, so the state funding is what I was talking about. That stays because that's based on that second month enrollment. But the, the fines and forfeitures and the county appropriation where we make payments every month, then that gets adjusted based on the student every month, student numbers every month. Ms. Justice?
I, let me ask, I've got to find something. I'm not doing very well. All right, I'm ready. Oh, you can find, I know this is sort of really up in the air right now, but they are really talking about cutting Medicaid, nation, nationally? Could this possibly apply to what we're talking about right now?
I don't think I have enough information on that to, to respond intelligently. All I can say is, right now, we're banking on the fact that we're going to see the same things we've seen last year.
Okay. Or more?
Good, Ms. Martin, more?
More's great, too.
Yeah, I would just echo, there's so much unknown. I absolutely echo what Dr. Barnes said. We have to count on what we've been doing so far, and until we have something more concrete, we're going to, we're going to count on being able to continue to serve at the same level, if not greater.
You're good. Okay. So, if you go on to page two, this starts the.
Page one, yay.
Starts the superintendent budget priorities.
Oh, boy, here we go.
And so, Dr. Barnes, I don't, I'm going to start going through, but feel, I don't want to steal your thunder if you want to.
You never ever not said something I wanted to say. You're good.
All right, so, what came, what rose to the top, and I think we've talked about it in this group before, as part of those budget listening sessions, were the items that you see here that total approximately $5 million. So, this includes safe and civil schools, district and school level PD, and several different areas. And I'm going to talk through these, and we'll talk through the amounts, but I'm going to let Julie, I'm sorry, Ms. Barnum, and Dr. Barnes fill in anything that I missed or if they want to add.
Well, let me center your thinking real quick.
Yes.
Because, as you know, what we asked, there were two things that came out of our budget listening priority sessions. One was safety of students. One was ability to access and support individual students. And so, if you look at this, you're going to see the first, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, the first nine cells, rows, are all the safety grant. I just parsed it out for you for what each individual thing would be. And then, I'll cover the other thing. But Julie, if you want to talk about the safe and civil schools, because that's half of the safety initiative, because we can't just focus on physical safety. We have to focus on students learning positive, effective skills at managing their own behavior. One, because that's going to change the dynamic forever, but also because that's going to turn them into better adults.
Yes.
So.
Yes, thank you. That's a, that's a great centering. While, yes, this is professional development, so we, we understand that that can feel like a heavy lift, but we also can all agree that we appreciate our professionals who engage in professional development, so that, that we are using the, the best information, the best evidence base to further our instructional opportunities, to further our teaching and learning. So, safe and civil schools, the unique part, and I know I provided information a couple of months back in a, an agenda review, but the unique part of their work is not only focusing on the creation of safe and supportive learning environments, but making sure that every student is receiving what they need, while every teacher is able to be fully equipped with an understanding of how behavior escalates, therefore, a great understanding in how, how they're able to de-escalate. So, a huge component of this is around staff well-being, and center, and when we know that we're focusing on staff well-being, we're focusing on our staff mental health as well. Student behavior, especially challenging behavior is, is a significant concern. So, while we know this is professional development cost, this is not a train-the-trainer model. We don't have an opportunity to send some of our lead staff out to be trained and then come back and train everyone. That, that dilutes the, the evidence base, and we don't want to do that. We want to bring our staff the highest quality that is able to support our students and staff at the same time. Within the structures that we have for MTSS, for our instructional framework, everything lines up. And, and so, I, I'm excited that we gave overviews to many of our schools, and then, as Dr. Barnes carried out his listening tours, I was not in the room, in the back of the room, every room whispering in ear saying, choose this, but I'm positive, but in the rooms I was able to be, and I did do that. But this rises to the top because the professional development is of high quality, and our staff who have been participating in this school year, which we had two different sessions, and I think we have three more scheduled, actually, we've had two sessions that were three days overall, and our staff are responding very positively to this work.
And do we want two, or three, or 400 more staff in our buildings? Of course we do. But if this is a way to equip and increase the efficacy of the teachers we have, and make them even better at what they're doing, then we win in the end, and so do kids.
Okay, my question is, is this on top of what they're already doing with professional development in other ways? Is this going to cost them, cost them extra time outside of their already overburdened classroom duties? Are we balancing it so that some of the other things, training-wise, are taken away so that they will be less stressed out? This is what I hear constantly from teachers. They're just way overwhelmed between the shortage on subs, the, the state requiring all this professional development and us to, can we make sure that we don't add more to their plate? This is excellent training, I totally understand it's going to make their lives so much better, and the kids, too, but we've got to understand they're human beings, and they can only do so much, and that's going to chase some of them away, again, which we don't want, especially someone that's.
For two of the sessions that will happen in June, they happen after the workdays, and so, part of our budget for those, which is not included in this, but it's included in this calculation for next summer. But for the training that we're doing this summer, we have school teams that have agreed to work additional days and receive additional pay.
And this is after, this is after the school years?
All of it is. So, the one, the ones that happened during the school day, then we're paying for substitutes.
Okay.
But what we have done so far has been for team leads, and then, team members, and not whole staff, but whole staffs of, of schools, and I didn't bring those schools with me, the handful of schools that we're doing in June, they will be coming in after the workdays and receiving stipends.
So, for us, yes, I want to limit, we're in sort of a sweet spot, because we've already done our, our training for letters training. We've already trained for wit and wisdom, they're up and running on those things, the math curriculum's trained and ready. So, hopefully, these things are going to take the place of some of the time they had to give to those. Now, a new teacher walking in, maybe from Minnesota, who doesn't have letters training, he doesn't have that stuff, yeah, there's going to be a burden on some folks, but for the folks who are continuing with us, our goal, and I think I mentioned this before, if we do too many things at once, we don't do any of them well.
Exactly.
I'd rather do one thing or two things and knock it out of the park, and this is our one thing.
Okay.
For professional development. Will they still have new teacher training? Will they still have all those things that, that new teachers have to go to and things like that, of course. Will they still have to do, and I don't want a teacher, some teacher somewhere is going to say, so we don't have to go to PLCs anymore. Barnes said we don't have to do that. No, but we're going to try to consolidate what professional development we are doing and things that work. Is that accurate?
There will also be the infinite campus professional development that will have to take place, for them to learn the gray book piece and the communication piece.
That should be a one-time.
That should be a one-time, yes.
So, that takes care of most of getting you all the way down to safe and civil schools facilitator. You see that line, line nine?
And if you add all of those things together, the first line all the way down to that 97, 55, 97,000, $55,000, that equals 378,000. And then, the next line is the safety positions. So, there's four of those positions, and Dr. Barnes, I don't know if you want to speak to those?
Yep, let's look at the next three lines from there.
Okay.
Safety positions, weapon detection equipment, weapon detection training. Part of my push for this community is that we have schools that are educationally the best in the town and the safest. And part of this is an initiative to address some of the physical safety needs of our traditional high schools. So, what these would do is provide for mobile weapons and metal detectors that can move around through the building easily enough. They can be at games, they can be at places, they're not things that stand by the front door every day, and they're not to physically make every kid walk through every one of them every day. But just like we do with our random screenings, you could come out of a room one day, and you'll go through the metal detector on your way out of your classroom. Or it may be set up at one door on Tuesday and a different door on three, on Friday, and it may be at the basketball game. And this ability to make a deterrent factor to help our parents and students feel safer is sort of what we're looking to do. Brunswick County now has several, it's a county north of us, and I can't remember which one it is, has them, Johnson, maybe, has them as well. These are sort of the newest and latest sort of push. So, those would be to fund the physical, those would be one-time positions that fund the equipment and the training. The other thing you'll see there is the safety positions, and that is someone, a classified position at every one of our four traditional high schools, that manages those detections, that helps manage things like all the drills that they have to do, that can manage and watch cameras and address things like that. It's a way to help us become less reactive and more proactive. So, those positions would actually work for the school system in coordination with our SROs, in coordination with our principals, to help increase the physical safety of students.
Wow. Wow, so this is, this is a new position. Four million dollars?
No, ma'am, you're one line down.
Am I reading it wrong?
You did. The, the safety positions are 274,000, go up a couple of notches.
Oh, good, that's why I was clarifying, I was just scared for a second.
The three, it looks like just over 500,000.
The safety positions would be 274,000.
Okay.
The weapons equipment is 240,000, the training is 3,000. You see those three lines?
What is the lifespan on those? Like the warranty? Warranty and lifespan?
Yes, it says there's a penalty warranty, but I have to verify that. I don't know what the, the law.
But it allows us to increase our agility and response time. So, those four positions are just 270. Sorry if I didn't make that clear.
That was me, I was just.
All right, now, let's talk about the big ticket item. Eddie, do you want to say anything else about the safety equipment we talked about?
This is one. No, I'm going to look up.
And Tim, that was the, Dr. Merrick, that was the one that you walked through when we were done that.
That went off when I walked through.
Yeah, we need to talk about that.
Oh.
The next thing is something I feel very passionate about because it grew through our principals. Over the last five years, we've taken an average of 5.9 million dollars out of our fund balance every year to, and this was the first year we have not touched our fund balance, and this was sort of the soldier that died on that field. It is a specific request for the county for two years to fund a specialist position at every school, that the principal and the school leadership team decide what that job is supposed to do, under specific data points and, and responses, that then I can take to our legislators and say, this is an unfunded mandate that you require us to do, individually pivot on student need is a requirement through MTSS, which is what the state calls it. Here's the data. When the county commissioners funded these positions for two years, this is what data points they moved, and help use that to highlight the need. Now, the trick with this is it's not going to be just every school gets an extra position, and everybody goes on, and they're happy. There's going to have to be guardrails with it and data points that go along with it. So, we're going to provide probably four or five overall data points that I want to start tracking definitively, and let schools craft what that position does. It could be for academic remediation, it could be for academic extension, it could be for behavior modification, that doesn't sound right, behavior support, it could be for graduation rate. So, we're going to pick with our principals four or five real specific data points, and then pilot a program that lets us improve our support for kids on an individual, small group, small kid basis. And how much do those things move the needle? This is something the state, quite frankly, is, if you remember or have ever heard me complain about the instructional support allotment from the state, we receive funding from the state for something called instructional support, and that covers things like media coordinator, instructional coach, social worker counselor. Do you remember? Media coordinator, counselor, social worker, instructional coach. Our, mental health is in there as well, but our mental health is actually paid for through the county in other ways. So, those four positions. We have 60 for this district, not 60 of each, just 60. We have 76 counselors just to do what the bare requirements are for these students, and that's 60 more than they give us to start with. So, I'm looking for a way to talk the, the county into saying, give me time to get this data and take it to the state, because I do think it's something that the state should be funding, or it's something that at least will prove what my point is, that this funding allotment formula isn't correct. I like the fact that it lets us put the driver seat in the hands of the leadership team in each individual school, because our schools are very, very different places and have different needs. But every principal has talked about the loss of a utility player, right, on the bench, someone that can do a lot of different things. And one school may need that to help with their academics, and one school may need that to help with their behavior, but this puts the principal and the leadership team in charge of deciding that. It's a big ask, but it's also, I think, where the district needs to go as a, as a, as a unit.
And you, you had mentioned, I think, in previous discussions, that it would tie to the school's improvement plan, correct?
Yeah, we get 60 for the four, for groups.
Yes, we get 60, 60 positions.
60 positions total, Ms. Barnum and Ms. Justice.
Will you please provide clarity? It says with a two-year cost, so it's the total amount is just over 4 million.
Per year.
Per year, so that's, okay, that's where the clarity is, thank you. So, it would be a commitment from the county to do the 4 million increase this year and next year.
And honestly, two years is, is small to gain a real.
Good data.
Data point out of, but I figured I would start small. But it also provides what I consider an ROI for our county, for you as a board, to be able to say, this is working and this isn't, and it gives us time to pivot. If we feel like that's not working in a certain space, can we try again? Can we look at them different? So, I put two years with an asterisk.
Ms. Justice?
So, is this above and beyond the 8 million that we're already asking?
No, this is part of.
This is included in that.
It's basically half of the 8 million.
Yes.
So, it would be, as a total, just to bring you back, circle back around this, 4 million for this, 1 million for the safety grant, including both arms of it, and 3 million for the cost of living adjustment that we see every year.
That's basic.
And then, Dr. Merrick?
No, thank you.
Nope.
And again, this is something I have to bring to the board for approval, because this is currently, right now, my, or the superintendent's budget that I bring to you. You're going to see this on it, so we wanted you to be prepared and ahead of the schedule.
Thank you.
Well, we, it, I believe was scheduled until four, so we're after, we're after our time.
Should we finish this page?
At this point. What do we want to, do we want to finish this? Go ahead.
If you want to put a bookmark where you are, this can be our entire superintendent office hours next time, or we can bump it to the next budget work session.
I make a motion to this, this discussion to the next budget of work session, which is March 18.
Is that going to, just to, just to get clarification from Ms. Sutton, is that going to put us behind at all? to put us behind at all in any way, shape, or form with what's already scheduled?
So, the, the plan was to get through this binder, and then when... We're close, we're close, we're just short one, one page and one section, we're very close.
Oh, you're just a section?
How much time?
Really, March 19th was for whatever we didn't finish today, and then anything that came out of, so like, the board's budget, I'll bring that back. So, any conversations that came up where we needed additional information, that was going to give me an opportunity to bring that information back to the next board work session. So, so that's fine, I think if we want to bring what's left back on the 19th, we can do that.
Do we want to go through?
We have, we had a motion, and Mr. Wildeborn seconded that discussion on the motion to postpone the rest of this. Ms. Bradford?
I think while our brains are engaged, even though they're getting all fuzzy, if we could get through two and three, we need through three pages. It depends on how much Dr. Barnes needs to explain on page three.
Well, it also means having questions, I guess.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's the difference.
I'm teasing, too.
But it, you know, it is a good spot to bookmark, but...
Honestly, if you guys could get through two and three, we can run it through in 10 minutes, and then we'll have a little more...
No question.
...agility to, to build, you know what I mean? Because then we can bring, we could probably bring a mock budget back on the 19th if we can get through this.
Right.
I have a, if they have to be at a 43, so...
No, yeah.
There's a motion on the floor. And there is a motion on the floor. So, we have a motion to postpone the remainder of this until March. Would you call the board for me?
So, I'm sorry, I thought you had, I thought you had recommended in the motion to do it in the next, uh, one.
Correct, that's the motion, yeah. To postpone the, the remainder of it, too.
Postpone to the March 19th work session, that's what I said.
Yes.
Well, hold on, I'm confused here.
Whatever is left from today...
Yes.
...moved to the next budget session in March.
I see. I thought you had recommended that we would do it during the next one-to-one, but Dr. Barnes...
No, no.
We said no to that.
No.
But I can definitely try to prep you guys during that time, if that will make this go quicker.
All right.
Melissa Mason?
Uh, yes.
Josie Barnhart?
Yes.
Pat Bradford?
Yes.
Judy Justice?
Yes.
Tim Merrick?
No.
Pete Wildeborn?
Yes, aye.
All right, that passes five to one.
What a motion we adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn, and a second.
Second, second, second. Can I just make a quick statement?
Pete has to leave, so I, it's just, it's a matter of...
Oh, that's right.
So, all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes six to zero. We are adjourned.
Gosh, great job, people. Seriously.
Thank you.
You absorbed a ton of information.
That was a lot.
That was good information.